Good evening and welcome to the Acton School Department School Committee meeting, January 13, 2022. And we'll begin with saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, remember that.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
We do. I have one. Right after comments from the public, I'm just going to add, you can, Jen, you call it whatever you want, number three, and make adjustments throughout the agenda. It's going to be a request from the eighth grade team. And when we get to that part, which is coming right up after comments from the public, I'm going to give you just a quick overview of what I believe Dave Cody is here to talk about and bring up to speed, and then the floor is his. And we are going into executive session this evening.
Okay. So that's it for adjustments. Any comments from the public? All right, hearing none, let's move on to the request from the eighth grade team.
Sounds good. So, school committee, this was not in your packet because it came up after the packet went out on Monday at a Tuesday team meeting with the middle school group. Some things around the capstone came up. So I'm going to give you one page of policy IK. I have the full policy with me. There's a lot in this policy that has to do with proficiency-based learning. And if you take a look at the piece I pulled for you, this is the section E on transition. This is the emphasis of the part of the policy that Dave is here to speak about, okay? And if you remember right, there's a capstone project for the eighth graders. And the history on this is, the year we stopped schooling in March, we didn't do a capstone. I mean, we're doing the best we could with remote learning. We did a great job. The capstone was not something that we needed to address that year. The second year, the team came to me and said, hybrid learning is difficult to do this. What do you think about the capstone? And I brought it to you. So about a year ago now, your response was, sure, we can let it go this year, but offer the kids an opportunity to do it. We offered the kids an opportunity, and I think four stepped up and said they'd like to do it. I had all the material. I was going to do it with them. It came down to one, and at the end of the day, she chose not to do it, just to kind of give you how that played out. So with that as a background, with the policy in front of you, I'll turn it over to Dave.
Okay. So, the seventh and eighth grade team has been looking at the capstone and as far as, should we, should it be a priority or should some other things be a priority this year with the eighth graders? And we looked at it as potentially wanting to put it off another year. And I want to kind of tell you why. Obviously, we've been in some unique times with the pandemic and so forth, and it's, a lot of things have changed, and a lot of, you know, a lot of what we normally have teach, you know, we really haven't taught all of the expectations over the last few years. I mean, I think everybody's given it a really good try, but we're still seeing, I mean, I think the kids have adapted really well, and of course, it's been the best thing for them, to everybody be back here this year, of course. And we've been working diligently to get, you know, a lot of those basic skills and a lot, not only academic skills, but also the skills that, as we're looking at the eighth graders, that they will need to move on, you know, move on to high school, that really went by the wayside with this extensive amount of, you know, remote learning, hybrid learning, interruption of the, of just the school process. You know, one thing I think that the pandemic has shown is how important school is, how important it is for giving expectations, and how important it is for, you know, getting kids organized and giving them a lot of the skills they need to move on. And we saw some certain behaviors at the beginning of the school year that I think we were kind of going, wow, we haven't seen, haven't seen it quite like this before, but the kids had adapted and they're, you know, and things settled in pretty well. Academically, we are really finding that there's a lot of these basics that we're still trying to, we're still trying to make up ground on, to be quite honest with you. You know, in the areas of work completion and in test-taking, preparing for death, you know, keeping organized, managing your time. Think of this, this is all things that got disrupted incredibly in all of our lives, really, during the pandemic. And it's been, quite honestly, it's been a bear, really getting them, you know, getting them back on track. And of course, this time of year, we feel the pressure as the kids are, the eighth graders will be signing up for high school classes within a couple of months, and then we'll be working on the finishing touches to get them ready for high school. So, we looked at it as prioritizing. I mean, we are, you know, in homework completion alone, just to kind of give you a little overview of what we've done, we were noticing a lot of assignments not getting done, troubles with deadlines, and we have not made the progress despite a lot of diligent work that we'd like to see. You know, we started off with all the kids, we knew it was going to be an issue, so we started right out with every single kid would have an assignment notebook that we would look at and initial in every class that this is the, this was the assignments for every single class. We've got an electronic format with Google Classroom that lays out all the assignments, you know, which is new over the last couple of years as well. The, we even sent two extra emails/back, blackboard messages home to, you know, kind of, to let parents know, you know, check these resources and, you know, really trying to get, you know, get the performance up on work that was out of class. Our kids are awesome, I'll be quite honest with you. They do some wonderful things in class. You know, it's just that, kind of that, once they left us, this is some of the things that we've, you know, we've been seeing. We, we did some modifying as well, working on extending due dates, things like that. We've really ramped up and amped up. We have a tutorial period at the end of the day where the kids can get a lot of help on the work because we know it's a burden, especially at our level, for parents to do a lot with, you know, with the kids. We've got our after-school tutorial that we have two days a week, okay? We've had that going all year, and we've, you know, we've kind of tried to ease the homework burden some as well. And I'll be quite honest with you, we haven't made as many gains as I would, as we would all like to see in those consistent skills, studying, those study skills and organization skills and the work completion skill. Sometimes, you know, hovering around 50% preparation or completion of things that are done out of class. So, this is kind of, I know, kind of a long overview, but we sat down, we started thinking about it. What is, from our perspective, of course, you know, what is the priority here? I mean, we're seeing some of these challenges. We want to throw a capstone that is largely, it's really not, it's not really an issue for us to undertake. It's a pretty easy thing for us to undertake as teachers because it's much, it's really an independent project, and it does build on a lot of these things, but in the nuts and bolts of every day, we're prioritizing the nuts and bolts of getting them ready for high school. And we see this as kind of some of the above and beyond enrichment that we do when things are normal and when times are, you know, times are more normal. But not necessarily the nuts and bolts that we feel that we need and the time we need dedicated to what I just talked to you about. So we, we kind of voted amongst ourselves to kind of say, you know, let's, let's bring this forward because we really want to kind of give this one more year and continue to make up a lot of these skills that I just mentioned. So we're really petitioning you to, since it's a school board policy, to go along with it. If not, we do what we do.
Discussion?
Well, I would like to say, I had six kids going to school at one time, and as a parent, I made sure every kid did their homework. Like, I'm wondering what's going on with the parents, I guess. I'm worried about the children right now, even the peers of all my kids, who now, the youngest is going to be 27. So it's just, I don't know what's going on. It seems so odd that parents aren't getting the kids to, you know, sit down, get the homework done. And I understand, I'm not talking about the last two years, I'm talking this year, where they've been in school, they go home, do your homework, you know? Are they just not being supervised? Like, I don't understand. Now, I mean, I didn't have those electronics to go look up. I know my brother talks to me about his 14-year-old daughter, telling me he can go on, see if she did the homework, then talk to her and say, you didn't do this assignment, I can see on, you know, whatever the electronic board is. I didn't have that. I just had, what do you got for homework? Let's get on it, you know? So I, it's not something we can solve. We can't go into people's homes and say, hey, how come you're not doing this? So the onus is on the student to get their work done. And I like the fact that you're doing the assignment book that worked well for, especially one of my children, we made sure, and it was signed by the teachers. So I don't know what else we can do. And it does sound like this year, the capstone would be too much of a burden. We need them to learn the basics and get through the school year. That's the way I feel.
I've heard some of the kids at the high school are having the same issues with the homework and completing projects, so I think overall, probably, there's still a lot of stress out in the world. So I'm okay with the capstone being held back this year and focusing on other things.
Yeah, I mean, is that terribly important, that they graduate need to have that? I mean...
It's not a graduation requirement.
No, that's what I mean, you know, just...
A policy that they do it, to be honest with you, but this is your opportunity to give, you know, a stay on this if you choose to.
You know, extenuating circumstances, I mean.
No, my thing with the capstone, because I know Kevin Perks was big in giving us this whole policy here, it's really to give them the courage to get up in front of people and to public speak, because I could never public speak, believe it or not. I'd believe. So I thought, man, what an opportunity, if they're doing it at the young age, the middle age, and then, you know, when they're getting to eighth grade, to be able to get up, present, and something that you love, you know, something that you want to teach others about. And so that's really, it wasn't to be a burden, it was, I didn't feel it was ever to be a burden, but to give another life experience of being able to speak in public.
But it is now.
And I will answer to that, too. I mean, one thing to make you, because I think it's a very valid point, is we do, as part of all of what we were just talking about, we do a lot with presentation, expectation, you know, they're part of our curriculum as it is, and, you know, and the capstone is, kind of takes it, you know, your own awareness, your own social awareness. We do, you know, I think you can feel relieved that we do a lot with presentation, so they're not going to miss out on that, and that all weaves in a lot of what I just said that we're trying to do to get them ready for high school, and presentation is one of them. Really what is, you miss by not doing the capstone is that social awareness thing. How can, where's your, what's your role, you know, how can you make a difference so to speak? And again, it's an admirable thing, but looking at the big picture, that's why we're here today.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I agree that these last three years have been just, there's nothing normal about what's been going on, not just here in the school, but with the kids in their home lives and everything. And probably a lot of the, especially the older kids may have really been left alone to do some of these things without the supervision because they are older and they should be more responsible, and they've had the freedom to choose to do it or not to do it. So getting them to the place where they choose to do it because they need to do it is a very, very good thing. I also agree that the capstone projects are really awesome. I mean, I loved going through the gym, and the nice thing about them was that every kid got to do something that they really liked and they really wanted to do, and I think some of the kids maybe that don't do as well necessarily academically can really shine through these capstone programs because they're into something they really love and they want, and they want to tell you about it. And so I think they're really important, but I understand, I also understand the issue for this year that we have to set priorities, and I think that's what the team is trying to do. So basically, because this is our policy and because this is our decision, we need to vote on it.
Can I make an, just wording for your motion is important because in the transition under E, it's not just a capstone, there are gateway exhibitions at K-2 and 3-5, so that would be Mr. DeBriscoe in grade two and Mrs. Leclair and Sandra in fifth grade. What I would recommend in your language is, allow me to go to the K-2 cohort, or in this case, it's now K-3 cohort for this year, and the four through six, and speak with them and allow them to have a choice of what they want to do. The capstone, they came to speak about the capstone, which is the biggest piece of it, but if the teachers and the leaders in those groups feel it would be good for the kids, I feel they should make that decision, not me. So if you would take a vote on not, you know, forgiving a year's stay on the capstone and to allow the gateway exhibitions to be chosen by the teams, that would be great. And I'll bring it up in our next meeting.
Okay.
And if they choose not to, that's fine, for all the same reasons Dave so eloquently laid out for you, but if they also choose that they think it's something they want to do, I'd like them to at least have that opportunity.
Sure.
So then, that's what we're looking for, for a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion that we put a stay on the capstone for the eighth graders and let the, now you said it was K through three and four through six?
Correct.
To decide what they will do with the gateway exhibitions.
For this school year.
For this school year.
Well, second thought? Okay, second and five. Sujay? Any further discussion on it? All those in favor? I don't know.
Thank you.
Do you guys need this?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll move out of the way. So, for Celebration of Learning, which is our upcoming agenda item?
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
You have your, oh, you need...
No, I got it.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to mention that before I move out of the way, that the whole PBIS piece that we work so hard with for the last, well, it's been going on a six-year now, really has been great. The COVID year that we moved away from in March, really not much got done. Last year with hybrid, we reinstituted some things, but not all things, because we didn't have all kids five days a week. It was difficult. We didn't abandon it, but we couldn't even gather in the gym most of the time with all kids. It was just, you know, it was all crazy with the three-foot spacing. Now we only have masks, that's it. So we're kind of back at it, and we're doing a great job. And tonight, I thought for Celebration of Learning, it would make a lot of sense to bring three people from the committee here to speak on it. Lori and I are on the committee, but let's let somebody else talk about what we do in PBIS tonight. So I have Kristy Hall, our social worker. I have Lindsay Crawford, one of our kindergarten teachers, and Ms. Jen Goodwin, who you all know is going to help with this presentation as well.
I'll move too, to get out of the way.
So PBIS is getting back up and going this year, kind of took a little bit of a hiatus last year, and we are, you know, super excited. We have just did expectations, so throughout the entire school, all students kind of did sort of a review. We're halfway through the year, so we did a review on it. We just wanted to share some fun with you. So some students following the expectations, whether it's in the hallways or as they're entering the building, making sure that we are safe, sanitized.
Going back to that, Jen, we've added a couple of new expectations with COVID, so we've added hand washing, mask wearing, so we have all those expectations that are, want to come there.
Those spaces, because, you know, we need some space and we need to have our hallways neat and clean, so students know that any that are using that space to keep the hallways still neat, keeping our school looking nice and in classrooms, raising our hands and following the expectations within that space as well. Sledding is a new one that we have been, I don't know if you want to talk on sledding, I'll be quiet on that one.
I love that sledding. So we added some sledding expectations since some sleds were generously donated to the school and just want the kids to be able to have extra fun at recess, but also continue to be safe, respectful, and responsible. So the K-3 cohort, they do sledding inside the playground, inside the fence, and then four, six, and then seven, eight, when they get the chance to walk side, are able to sled on the hill outside of playground parameters, but with a duty teacher right there. And I have personally been down the hill, and it is very fun.
Of course.
So there are a lot of different ways that here at Acton Elementary School, the teachers, staff are recognizing our kids, so these are just some bulletin boards that are throughout the school, just really showcasing our kids and appreciating things that they do and ways to welcome them and make them feel part of the school. Down in the corner, the Pac-Man, that is a PBIS classroom expectation, so as the students complete or follow expectations within the class, they get, the Pac-Man will go and eat the dots, and then after they get all those dots taken off, they get a classroom celebration. So just another way to acknowledge PBIS. Again, this is more bulletin boards, just showcasing our kids and giving them some positives. This here is different ways that classes are celebrating kids. There is down at the bottom, that is the upper grades in that social studies. It is an electronic way to say, you know, you get points for following expectations, and then they can use those points to buy something, they can, they actually have the ability to trade points, so it's kind of a little bit fun and interactive. They can go in, they can see how many points they have. Another class is doing like little walks to get, and as, once that jar is full, then they have it written out that says what they're, what they're trying to earn. So there's just different ways. There's the Awesome Job Wall, which is in ELA, seven, eight. So students, and I hear that personally, you know, kids will say to me when they come for lit circles and they say, oh, I hope this makes the Awesome Job Wall. So it is fabulous to hear kids know that, you know, their excitement and they want to do well. So those are just, just different ways that people are showcasing, again, our kids. Learning Center B, which ties into PBIS and making sure that we are safe, and as you enter that space, which is really well-done, there is a welcome sign. It isn't a, you know, you are here, you've done something, it's just a, hey, we're here to help you. And so it's another way to be positive and really welcome and embrace all of our kids where they are. So it truly takes a village. Each and every one of us here make a difference in impacting our kids and making sure that they are well cared for. Just some different classrooms and beautiful things that are happening here at Acton Elementary School. So being positive, as we all try to.
Anything else you want to add?
I would love to just give Jen a big kudos as the chair of PBIS because she really has, we haven't had that momentum over the last few years to keep moving and progressing, maybe in the program the way we want to, but we're doing as much as we can with what we have, and she keeps us on track, she makes sure that we are moving forward in that direction. So thank you, Jen, for being an awesome chair.
Does the committee have any questions?
No, I like the sledding one.
I'd also like to say that Mr. Ross was officially the first one down the hill.
He said, this would have been a good thing to get on camera because I fell off the sled.
Actually, I took pictures of the girls the other day, so they were the first.
Thank you very much, PBIS committee.
Nice job, guys.
It's great to see the things that are, I mean, we see things in the hall, but it's great to see the things that are happening in classrooms and what's happening with, how different classrooms are rewarding kids for the PBIS behavior. And yeah, it's great. Anybody else got anything?
No, are there any other areas that we have to have, you know? Yeah?
Any more areas for expectations at this moment?
Because you did the bus, you did, you know, like the lunch and recess.
So there's bathrooms, there's hand sanitizing, face masks, hallway, voice level.
Cafeteria.
Yeah, the cafeteria, the...
Sledding and parent pickup. Parent pickup's new and mask is new, because those are all new processes. It could be, the answer is, it's always fluid. You may find an area where we say, that's a weak spot, using Swiss data, and say, we need to build some expectations around that weak spot, so that's, it's always evolving.
Well, tell the pickup that, right, yeah.
Yeah, the parent pickup, we had to come up with some SOPs. It's really PBIS for parents, isn't it? The kids got it, but it's more, it's a real parent piece there.
It was really well, very smooth.
Goes great.
Yes, I came in and I'm like, wait, all the parents are gone? The kids are gone? Like, wow!
Okay, so, next thing on our agenda, number four, is the COVID update, and I've just passed you the latest information from, that's come down from the PMA, and I think we all know that we're still in a very high contagious stage of our virus. It's going everywhere, and it's hard to talk to somebody that hasn't had it, somebody that in their family's had it or somebody hasn't had it. It's interesting, since, since we first looked at this back at our meeting in September, there's been over 100, there've been over 100 more cases that have been recorded in Acton. And that's, I'm sure there are a lot, a lot of times that people have it that doesn't get reported.
Right.
So I think we're doing well on being diligent on keeping the masking up in schools, and I think it's great that the state has made some changes so that the kids don't have to necessarily go home if they sit beside somebody because we're wearing masks. That's really the salvation of that part. And it's a big plus, too, that the staff, if they've been around somebody, doesn't have to stay out for the full 10 days because that's really been a, that's been an issue trying to keep all the classes covered, and sometimes when they're out, they don't, they don't really want to be out, but they have to be out because the state says they have to be out, so now they can come back sooner. So that should, that should make your job a little bit easier, too, with trying to keep everybody covered. So, any questions about the COVID stuff?
You can't not hear about it.
Can't not hear about it.
Good to have just factual numbers, though.
It is, yeah, it's good. And Joan and I both get these two or three times a week, actually, saying what York County is doing, what all the other counties are doing, and where we fit in, and we're just still in a high transmission area in York County, and they just urge everybody to wear masks if they're out in public, in, going in public places, and so...
I think there's a few schools in York County that are remote learning right now, right?
And to take a break for the rest of this week, yeah, I got that email from those other districts saying, we're going to take until Friday and Monday being a day off and try to come back. Couple of middle schools and a high school. No elementaries that I know of, but middle school and high school.
But when you look at the rest of the country, we're very fortunate to be where we are, so you can't even compare.
Well, we have a universal mask option, so it's at the school board level, but I don't know. There are some schools in the state of Maine that have left masks optional. I don't know who they are.
Well, I'm not talking about masks necessarily, I'm talking about the overall situation.
Oh, you mean the overall, not, not just schools?
Teaching, going to school, not going to school.
Sure. But it does fall back to the mask mandate in the school allows kids to be at school. It falls back to the decision you made in September, which was the right one.
Yep.
I can get into that with the next... I can get into that with the next agenda item when you're ready for it.
All right, all set with COVID. Let's move on to SOP changes and that's you.
Yep, there's only three things. I reported it to the school committee, my weekly update, but for the public to know because this is, this has moved rather quickly over the holidays. Just to remind everybody back, last year was 14 days of quarantine if you were close contact or you had COVID. And then of course you couldn't return to the workplace or the school until you were symptom free. So we went from 14 to 10. We stayed with 10 days for quite a while. We just moved for isolation and quarantine periods for students and staff. Are shortened consistent with recently updated guidance from the US CDC, which is five days, was 10 and became five. And that happened when we came back to school after the holiday break. So that cuts the time in half. And as Judy recognized, it's, it's really made a difference here. The Maine CDC will open an outbreak investigation if a school reports more than 15% of the school population is absent. It used to be if you had three positive cases within a full run of a two-week period, meaning that first case didn't end until the 14th day and you had two others, you would be in an outbreak situation. Now they're using the 15% rule, which is the standard currently utilized to define an outbreak for other infectious diseases such as the flu. So they're using the same, same benchmark, which makes sense. And then the Maine CDC, the last one, will no longer consider exposure to COVID-19 in an indoor setting or on a school bus. It will no longer consider it in an outdoor setting, excuse me. So you can be outside and be near somebody with COVID and it's not even going to be recorded. So it's now considered for us for reporting in an indoor situation only. And a school bus, that goes back to the federal transportation, you know, Uber, school buses, subways, airplanes, got to wear a mask. So those are the changes, those are the updates on the SOPs. And I hope they just kind of stay like that for a while because the parent curve on this, when they call in and say, my kid may have been with another kid over the weekend and, and we give them new guidance, they're kind of like, wow, I didn't know that. So once five days becomes the norm, it'll be a little easier. But yeah, Carol's pretty busy answering a lot of new questions around the new SOPs because I'll give you some data in a little while on my update on how we're doing in the school with kids and staff. That's it.
That's what I mentioned too, that I know he sent copies of it to us, to us. But a few of the superintendents did write to the state and say, you know, this is too long a time for our staff to have to be out if they're not sick. And, you know, this is really affecting our ability to effectively run our classrooms and keep the kids on track. And I don't know if that carried any weight on it or not, but John wrote a very nice letter, which you all saw. And some other superintendents did likewise, right? So thank you for that. All right, let's go on to number six, which is a consent agenda. And I will look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Mary, seconded by Jeanette. Any discussion? All in favor? So moved. All right, we'll move on to chair reports and we'll start with a superintendent's report.
Okay, just got, really just two quick things. Dennis Long and I had a conversation on the phone yesterday. He would have been here tonight, but he's in a meeting up at the town hall. And he wants to know, to let everybody know that his absence is no way of reflection on Warren Finance's interest in working with us on the school budget. There is definitely, there's something that starts at 6 o'clock up there. Also Dennis mentioned that he's the chair of Warren Finance this year, but all the members are new this year. So there'll be nobody on the committee that we've worked with in the past. So when we prep up and have our first meeting, there might be some, a learning curve there that these new members might be interested in and seeing how we do our process. So that's the first one. And the anticipated, you know, numbers for COVID after the holiday break are probably lower than I thought they would be. We sent the kids home with computers and we had the staff ready that if we couldn't come back on January 3rd, we were in a place where we could offer some semblance of an education, depending on whether it's just the elementary or the middle or a classroom or two. I didn't know what I was going to get. But coming into New Year's Eve, I sent out a memo to everybody saying, I haven't heard from anybody, that anybody's got anything. And then we sent out a blackboard too. And that generated some parent emails to myself and to Amanda saying, hey, we're going to be out with our children. But at the end of the day, you know, you're 15%. We, right, as of today, we had 26 kids that are out due to an illness. Now that could be anything from just not having a tummy ache to having, you know, something that might be a case of COVID. So they're out, they're not out on vacation, they're out for a illness. And we have a couple of staff members out due to sickness. So really we're only at, we're at 20, so 28 people. We need 36 people in the building to hit 15%. And I'm still not sure if that includes teachers. I'm looking, I asked Carol to look into that for me. So if the 15% rule is just our student body, is that students? So I added teachers just to see if we get to 15%. We're still below it. And this is, this is the second week after the holidays. So we're doing okay. I mean, I don't like having that many kids out, but we haven't had to close a classroom. Yeah, so that's not too bad. So, and also just, just as a reminder, the transition back was great. Kids and teachers transitioned back from the holiday break and we've had really no issues other than the staffing and filling in because somebody needs to be out for five days. And then trying to fill in with each other because we only have one sub. And Amanda, we use her an awful lot. So right now, because of the situation and because many of our subs, of course, are ones that have helped us over the last two years are retired, right? They'd like to like maybe have a retirement somewhere and not come in here and cover classes. So the reality is they'd like some time to themselves as well. That doesn't mean our three are sick, it just means that they might not be available. So the staff has been great. They pitched in, they've covered for everybody. I always, I'm always like, oh God, I got to ask, but I got to ask. And not a grumble. People got it and they're more than willing to pull on the rope as heavy as anybody else in the organization. So the transition back was good. And that's it for my report.
Okay, well, Pat's in Florida for a while.
Dixie, you do.
Okay.
I do have questions for the administrators.
Okay, good, that's where we're at.
I'm just wondering, Andy, was that one of the new unit ventilators that broke down or whatever that I see in your report?
No, that was just a, a component, one of the old ones that we replaced.
I was glad.
Yep.
Did you set up a date yet for a meeting with the Sanford people, the group that I think you said you would be in? Is that set up already?
So I'm going to let Kim bring, I put in my report where we are, but I am going to let Kim give some details of her first meeting that had to happen and it's now done. And Andy, I'm going to have you speak to the furnace at the LRP.
Oh, okay.
When we get LRP, you might be like, where did that happen? I moved it to LRP and I didn't tell you, so Kim?
So I met with Cheryl Fornier at Sanford. I had done drafts of all three contracts we have. We have nutrition, we have sped, and then we have tuition. And two of them were kind of open-ended. They didn't have a review date or anything like that. So when I redid the drafts, I had taken them and I made it so that they would review pretty much all at the same time. Okay? Because like when I, I had Sharon, we went over like the sped one. And then there's a second page that goes with it that says, you know, these are all the requirements for sped. This is for the direct ship for about 12 kids, for the overhead stuff. And there was a lot of old stuff in there, you know, that's either been changed because of state rules and stuff like that. So we updated all of that. And so I went, I met with Cheryl in December. And we went over every one of the contracts. And I had left basically how we calculated the amounts. I left them pretty much the way that they were. And, you know, we talked a lot about it. And we were, you know, I wanted her to be able to go to her superintendent and start saying, okay, is this what we want to look at and make any adjustments so that we could see what they were looking at? They wanted something different. I tried to call, I did talk to Cheryl today. And, I mean, I met with her in the middle of December and unfortunately she hasn't had time to look at any of them. So that's kind of where I am. I'm basically in Sanford's plate right now.
Well, the timeline's good because we need an answer by spring of next year, not this year. So we're, we're, we're okay.
We're a year ahead, you know, so...
And I think this is really a good approach to take too, is for you to work with you and the, yeah, special finance and special ed and the superintendent to, to work together on that and then bring it back to us as a board.
Right.
I mean, that makes total sense to me.
Well, thank Kim for taking the time to go down to Sanford and work with her because that was the first thing that had to happen and she did that during the busy holiday season. So, and did a nice job with it.
And just one other question. We usually set up a stipend committee for the budget and usually it's January. So I just was wondering.
We, yeah, we will, you know. Everything with the stipends for the last couple of years have been, like, we didn't do basketball. We, you know, so we haven't, I mean, we had intermurals last winter. And I don't know what we might be doing just to kind of stop through, to get through breaks and stuff. But I don't really have anybody who like is looking for any new things yet or anything in that, in that regard. We are just beginning to, well, John will talk about the budget process in itself anyway. We haven't put it together yet. We are, you'll, you'll hear from me.
All right. I know we did it all by email last year, I think.
Yeah.
So that was good.
And, and like I said, I mean, I, I haven't had time to actually send out anything to any teachers. But usually we always have a year, you know, you do a pro bono and, you know, see how it goes. See how many kids you get, whatever.
So, you know, just to review the list and see if we're getting rid of or adding, so.
Yeah. I mean, that's really what we'll probably be looking at this time as well. It's just a review. I mean, what we find is like sometimes if, like if we don't do basketball, but we do intermurals, we'll take the money that we would have had from the basketball to pay the people for the intermurals. So the money is always, you know, we always have something to cover the people that are doing some of the work, you know, if we do something outside of the box. But, yeah. Yes, it's part of the contract, so, the teacher's contract, so we have to do that.
Yeah, so actually there hasn't been really anything extra for the last two or three years.
But they're, they're not extra, but we are doing clubs and activities again. So the Green Club has a bunch of kids here. Robotics had their early session, had a bunch of kids here. The, the Odyssey, the Mine met tonight. They meet on Thursdays. And then of course, we'll give you an update maybe at the next committee meeting on how our Winter Academy is going for the learning loss through the grant, which was tonight as well. So it's nice that there's people around here night again. But anything new, other than intermurals, if somebody said, I want to pitch intermurals, that'd be a permanent thing? That's the only thing I can see and nobody's pitched it yet, so.
That's it.
Anybody else have any questions for any of the administrators? Any else up to move on? All right, then let's move on to committee reports, number eight. We'll start with the policy committee.
So we reviewed a bunch of policies and as you can see, Lisa had a really nice way of showing what the updates are now. So it's very, very, very clear that you can see, like the first one, BCE, it's just changing meeting to meetings. So that's pretty much the kinds of updates for everything. It's very, very small punctuation, spelling.
Very, very small print.
That too.
I don't know how it got so small.
Well, she took part of the page and to put, yeah, so that skips everything over.
So I didn't know if the code of conduct, JIC...
That was the only one, yeah, that had a little...
No, does that have, you see, I, I didn't see the, the code up at the top now. Is that missing or just because of the way it's redone?
Oh yeah, I didn't have the letters on the front.
It could have come down, like, if she printed it and sometimes the header is like up too high. So the code's probably there.
Okay.
It was on the goal, sometimes it moves stuff up.
No, but because we're looking at them, I want to make sure that it's labeled, but...
It was on the electronic version?
Yeah, online, if you click GIC, that comes up.
Okay.
Yeah, I checked it.
Yeah, it looks like very, very minor changes. I'm good with those.
All right, so I would like to move that we accept the updated policies as shown in these papers.
Do you have to list them all out or?
Oh, sorry, do I?
What happened?
I probably do.
Yeah, I, I think it would be good to just mention them by name.
Um, so policies BCE, BDB, JIC, JO, and JRAA.
Okay, and those are standing committees, school committee officers, code of conduct, student records and directory information. And CJ has made that a motion and Jeanette has seconded it. Any questions about these? These are all updated as of today, as, after we vote on them, correct?
Yeah.
No new ones, just updates.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on any of these? All in favor? So moved. Okay, let's move on then to number eight two, which is long-range planning committee.
We did not meet.
If I could, with your permission, could I call on Andy for an update that you are unaware of because it happened today?
Okay.
Okay, so for under LRP, can you give us just a quick, what's been going on out there in the boiler room, please?
Yes.
Happening fast.
The guys showed up on Monday to start taking the old boiler out. They finished removing the old one yesterday afternoon. It was in like 12, 12 separate sections. Each one of those sections weighs about 800 pounds.
Oh my God.
So it was quite an undertaking to remove the sections. And I did, did take some photographs along the way because when the job's complete, I want to show, share with you folks where the damage on the old boiler actually was. Because once it was fortified, we could actually see what the inspector found. It's pretty significant damage. So yesterday they finished removing everything. And today they started putting the new boiler in, which is a nine sections, equally as big. They got about four of them installed today. And we'll have the remainder done probably tomorrow. And then they'll start assembling the outer case and the burner itself and then tying it back into the building. The boiler project, it's isolated so that the other boiler is currently running out of building. So there's no interruptions as far as being in session. But so far the, the replacement is going really good. It's quite an extensive project and it's also giving us some good insight as to what we should be looking at moving ahead as far as replacing the other boiler next year. So things are going pretty well, so.
So I can, I'm going to take a chance. They don't know I'm going to do this, but of the four of you sitting over there, unless if you heard it from Andy or me, how many of you know that we've been running off one boiler? And one boiler's been dismantled and has been being pulled out this entire week? Would you ever know it? You know it, why do you know it? I told you. My point is, you wouldn't know it. And we're running one boiler. And if you remember, I just spent zero with wind chills of 20 below the last two days. So I went out and leased two guys. But Mary, you know what the beautiful part was? I have one boiler running and I got two guys from Johnson and Jordan standing next to it. So if it didn't run, I'd say, go fix that one now. It was great, yeah, yeah. Nice job, Andy. It's, it's impressive. And if anybody really wants, how safe is it out there right now? Or is the block a tackle up and everything? Could I take anybody out to, or would you rather I don't?
Rather not.
You'd rather I don't, okay.
There's a lot happening out there.
Okay.
Even myself, I'm staying right out of the way.
I, I got you.
Assistance with stuff.
Okay.
But hoping to share with you next month, you know, the final, you know...
Definitely share the pictures.
Yeah, it's cool.
We'd like that, you know, it's complete and, and I'm really pleased with, with how, how good it's going.
Well, when they came by the house with the equipment, I thought they were going to move the whole building.
Yeah.
That's what it looked like.
Well, pieces that weigh 800, 900 pounds a piece.
On an apparatus.
That's what I said to them. I said, how are they moving stuff in and out of there? He says, oh, they've got a system. They've got a system and they know what they're doing.
It wasn't their first job.
Wasn't their first one, obviously, right? Okay. Thank you for that update, Andy. Now we'll move on to eight three, which is the negotiations committee. Do you have anything to report?
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
We've met with them twice, with the teachers. I don't know that there's much more to report beyond that.
Not yet.
But it's been good.
Very good. Everything's peachy.
So far, so far so good, yeah. That's good. Well, the new system that you have, I think, is...
Yes, it's worked well the last few times.
Yeah. Definitely better. Okay, then let's move on to number nine, which is new business. And that's the budget.
Hello?
I'm going to move again because I can't see well.
Okay. So tonight, we kind of kick off budget season with just a, kind of like a 30,000-foot overview. As Kim said, we haven't put a lot of numbers to... As Kim said, we haven't put a lot of numbers together. And as you know, we really won't know our final number until it becomes a school committee budget to vote on, and then that's the number we'll move forward to the citizens to vote on. So the FY '23 Act and School Budget, to kind of give you an idea of where we're going, is the process. You're very familiar with it, but perhaps not everybody who might watch this video and has new people moved to the town. It's a superintendent's budget, which is happening right now. As Kim works with teachers and looks at different cost centers, some things are gonna be made just in central office, some things will be added to or taken away from. And that's just what happens with the first round. And then we meet with you, and of course, adjustments can be made and are often made there and approved in our budget meetings, where we'll look at two or three articles at a time on the given nights. And I'll give you those dates in a bit. And then, of course, after you vote, there's a night where we look for the Warren Finance Committee to kind of give an advisory review of it, of the budget that you've approved. And then, of course, it goes to the town, and on the town floor, of course, adjustments can be made and approved right there, too, as well. I mean, that's the process. And the budget dates I put up here, it's up to you how you want these. If instead of trying to write them down tonight right here, I can send you those dates as a slide so you can put them in your book. They mirror just about every year we've done this. I will have you go all the way down, though, however, to Monday, 4/25, or Tuesday, 4/26. And this is because it's either going to be a town meeting on the school budget on a Monday night in here or a Tuesday vote. And at this point, I've had some conversations with Jennifer at the town. Tom McGurty, the new selectman, happened to come by for a tour with Andy and I. We had a chance to have a sidebar on this. And I would say that right at this time, and I think we should probably get a handle on this, the prevailing winds for how we're gonna pass the budget, that the vote at the Town Hall, at the ballot box, turned out two to three times more citizens than any meeting we've ever had in here.
Yeah.
And also, that this year, there may, again, like last year, there was like the Salt referendum. There may be another referendum attached to this if there's enough signatures from the town. And of course, that'll turn people out, too, just by itself. And if we did do the vote at the booth all day, we would do a couple of Zoom forums so that the town can participate, ask questions, make any amendments, just like we have in the past. So right now, I'm saying the prevailing winds are moving more towards a vote. And but that needs to be a discussion, you know, with you and with the town and with Jennifer, and making sure our dates are all backed up so she gets the ballot done on time, if that's what we choose. So that'll all kind of roll out over these dates that we meet. So, you know, by late February, mid-March, we will know what we want to do by then. If I had to take a vote right now, I'd say, outside of you guys, the information I've gathered from the town and Jennifer is, the vote at the booth is something that sounds like it might fly. Again, everybody's gonna want to weigh in on that one. So we'll see how that goes. And the other one is, you know, this COVID thing hasn't gone away. So that might actually impact it to the point where we don't have a choice. The first year, we didn't have a choice. The second year, we did have a choice. Now it's our third year to choose what we want to do. So a little tough to see, but not too much. All I want to say about this is, if you look at salaries and benefits and tuition, that's your blue. And then that's your gray, that kind of opposite each other. Those are your largest chunks of our Act and School budget. And Kim did something interesting. I asked her to make this chart for me. So this is the world we're living in right now. This is the FY '22 operating budget that you're looking at. So this is today's budget. This is tomorrow's budget. I did this last year and gave you last year's budget forecasting what this next year would be. I've done this for three years in a row. You know what's crazy is Kim did an analysis and showed me, and she said, "You know what? We vary by 1% in any given category on any given year. It doesn't change much." You know, 60 to 61% of our funding is gonna go to people. And it might be 61 here, it might be 61 the next, it might be 59 the other. You know, 22, 21% is in transportation. It could be 20, it could be 22, it could be 21. And as we looked at it, it was really interesting to see that over the last three years, the pattern has been, not in any given area, but it's about 1% of our total budget. Might move up or down, but it's pretty consistent. This pie chart has been pretty consistent for three years. It is an interesting thing to see that we haven't had any huge variations on how we're spending our funding at the school department.
Well, I think the biggest take from that chart is the 88% contractual.
Absolutely.
I'm not even counting the contracted services, but that'd be another four, so doesn't leave much left.
Now, when you think about it, at the end of the day, how much you actually control after you sign the line? So some of the goals going into this year are a little different because of some things that have happened with COVID, and we kind of paused. I think Dave did a nice job tonight kind of explaining what some of that pause in learning looks like to kids. We'll continue to refine the PBIS process. I'm very pleased that we're back at it this year and doing well with it, and we'll continue to do well with it. So I want to keep an eye on that next year and fund it appropriately. Refine COVID practices is needed. That's a year-to-year thing, and it's almost, it was day-to-day, but I'm... I don't know. I look at the end of this year, and I'm looking at masking, and I'm not seeing distancing. And I'm looking at masking, and I'm not seeing some other things that outside. I'm seeing that some of the winds are blowing more in our favor for teaching and learning at schools, and I'm hopeful. Review and improve school-wide literacy is always a goal. Review and improve math instruction has been a goal. Upgrade classroom ventilation, school safety, and implement new learning management system. I have each one of these broken down. So the processes for PBIS, revise the current process where needed, add new process. I think Mary asked that question. E-parent pickup was a new one. Masking was a new one for this year. We'll use Swiss data to help identify students who need behavioral support. We'll use this Swiss data to help us identify new processes. And we will renew school-wide celebrations. That's a conversation we had, we didn't talk much about in our PBIS presentation. But you remember the days when we had like the ice cream parties and everything? Couldn't do it when you couldn't get near each other. Well, we can start doing those things again, so. Next year will be another year to just renew that. School-wide literacy scores have improved. We're gonna continue to implement literacy programs schoolwide. That was something we took on two years ago versus just Title I pullouts. We made that shift two years ago, and we've seen a benefit to it. Use the time and talents of our Title I staff to maximize the benefits to students in need. Okay, then we've got that whole new Jolly Phonics program that's come in under this last budget cycle that Lori did an excellent job demonstrating to you how it works, and that's something we'll keep an eye on as well. Math. Math scores are generally flat. That's no surprise to the committee. Math pedagogy at the K-5 level has evolved. Patty did some really, really, really good work when she was the math coach. COVID didn't help her with this hybrid schedule, but she did great work given the schedules she had. And now we have a new I-ready math program that is evolving math at the K-5 level. Vertical alignment is needed, and we need to fully implement I-ready math via PD and staff and through Lori's office in the next year to make sure that that is what we're gonna stick with and that as kids are learning a math, a way of doing math K through 5, we shouldn't have to ask them to shift year 6 through 8. So that's not a mystery. We've talked about it, and that's something that we have to move forward on in the next year. And with the building, it's upgrade ventilation, excuse me, and maintaining the building in general, kind of coming out of the LRP committee. Plan as resources for identifying and funding improvements. Remember, LRP, we took $150,000 out for the burner repair and something else? We had a reserve fund to the tune of, I want to be careful, it may not have been $150,000. We had a reserve fund for capital improvements. We did the water pumps three years ago, but we didn't ask the public to refurbish the money for the water pumps. It was fairly significant. The furnace that Andy speaks of took the rest, and you moved that money into operations, and we've spent it. So in this next budget, even though it's not in the budget, it's set aside, I'm gonna strongly recommend we go to the citizenry to reload that capital improvement because if something else breaks, we don't have funds to take care of it in the operating budget. So that, to me, that's a real critical need, not in the budget, but as a separate article for reserves. And then Andy, ahead of him, and hopefully this summer, will install the 15-unit ventilation systems that we have in the designated classrooms, because right now, they're in our container. We bought them with COVID money, and now we need to install them with COVID money. It's just, when do you do it? Because that's a lot of work, and we're looking at, hopefully, next summer. So that's part of, if it's gonna happen in the summer after June 30th, that becomes a next-year priority. So that's why it's in this budget. And then, of course, safety. We'll have ongoing safety drills. We'll have our mandatory fire drills. I put work with the new Act and Chapley Patrol, because I'm under the understanding that we have a different deputy now. I haven't met him or her yet. Need to, and then bring that person in with the Act and Fire Chief and create a mock evacuation, perhaps, for this spring. If it's not this spring, it'll be in the next budget cycle, which will be in the fall. It's been two years since we've done that, and we need to do it. And I need public safety at my side when we do that, because we literally shut down the building and moved kids up to the Act and Fire Department in buses and pretend with the kids that their parents are picking them up up there, because we had an issue at school. And then that's about it. I saw AAS is awesome earlier in the presentation. Here we are again. So that's us in the lower left at Halloween. That's the staff dressed up this year. Has all kinds of different kinds of things. And then over on the right is Ms. Mittens' class. She did the Grinch theme for Christmas, and there they are enjoying their day around the holidays. So it's kind of how I wanted to end the presentation, with having the goofy staff and the fun kids in one photo. Any questions on kind of where the ship's heading for next year with the budget from the committee or anybody in the room? Okay. Thank you very much.
That was a good presentation. Good ideas as to where we're gonna be starting.
They decided who might be on the committee for the budget from Town Hall, but they're all, I mean, they already...
You mean Warren Finance?
Yeah.
I do. Dennis has a list of names. I recognized a few, but not all. You may, living in town, you may know all of the people. Dennis has a list, and when we're sure of the dates, I'll be providing those dates for him so Warren Finance can come here.
Okay, any other questions about the budget, comments? Thank you for putting that all together and letting us started to get that go, get that process going. We knew it would be coming soon, right?
Yep.
All right, let's move on to number 10, which is Old Business Revision Energy Contract.
This'll take one minute, and then we can adjourn for executive session. If you remember right, last month, I brought this back to you because we had, we met in the cafeteria. We had the gentleman from Revision Energy come, and he forwarded to Kim, to me, a, you know, a preloaded contract. Well, I also asked other schools and other superintendents that had a contract with Revision, because he named who they were, and I wrote them down, so I contacted them. I got their contracts as well. So I'm laying out theirs next to ours, and it's word for word. So it's a 20-year contract. I'm not gonna be around to see the end of this contract. And because it's a 20-year contract, I felt it really important to bring to you, have the presentation, and make sure you're comfortable with it. So what I'm gonna do is ask you for a vote to authorize me, after the final, final review, and I can update you when I do that, to go ahead and move into this agreement with Revision Energy for a 20-year contract. If you give me the authorization to do that, when I'm ready to sign the contract and send it back to Michael, I will. If you don't give it to me, we can talk about what you might want to do or do nothing.
How are you gonna know that these Revision Energy people are gonna be around in 20 years? Companies switch seats all the time, and you don't know what...
It's more or less a credit, so we need to get our power from somewhere.
So you think this, Ken, you think this is a good idea?
Yeah, I mean, basically, what it is, is all these solar farms, you know, they, what they do is they... The person who owns it needs to make sure that somebody's gonna buy their energy.
Correct.
Okay, so the one that we, this school, would be attached to is up in Sydney, okay? So what this does is it guarantees the landowner that Acton School is gonna be around for the next 20 years and will be buying electricity, basically from Sydney through CMP. You know, and so that way, they, the landowner actually has somebody who's going to buy the electricity. Okay, so in other words, they don't want to put this huge solar panel up there and have nobody buying electricity, because CMP isn't going to just give them money because they created electricity. They're not gonna do that. So what has to happen is the landowner basically says, "This bunch of things go to Acton School. This one is gonna go to the Fire Department. This one's gonna go to Alfred." And it stays there, and nobody else gets it. You just get it, you know? So that way, every time it generates electricity, the credit always comes to here. CMP will pay them for generating electricity. However, CMP knows that the credit will, it, we're generating, we will be generating electricity. So in other words, by having municipalities, schools, things like that, they're not going anywhere. Unlike homeowners, the homeowner could move six months from now.
Or a big, or a big building in Portland that's a corporate office, and then everybody works from home.
Right.
They don't need energy anymore. So I get it. It's a risk on the part. And the thing I really liked about Revision is these aren't energy brokers. They're just, we're basically buying into a co-op of a credit. We have to get our energy somewhere, and they said we're gonna roughly 15% over time save money. Well, why not? Take the 15%. We're still gonna get our energy from CMP. It's just where are they getting it from on the grid to give it to us? That's all it is. We're still getting, it's a kind of a concept, you're just gonna think the electric always gonna come on? But who out there in the world is creating, because it used to be just one place, you know, a hydroelectric plant. Well, not anymore. So now we're saying we're gonna take X percent, and we're gonna buy it from this farm in Sydney, a solar farm. CMP's gonna take care of all the details, but we're gonna sign off that we're gonna do this for 20 years. That's what the contract states.
No. Too bad you couldn't have made this presentation at our last meeting. It would have been a lot shorter. It would have been a lot shorter and a lot clearer, a lot easier to understand.
Now, do you know how much of this building they're gonna cover with those panels? You don't know that?
We're not putting them on this building.
No, no.
No.
No, no.
There isn't gonna be nothing on it.
No, you won't notice a difference. You're still just gonna turn on the lights, and there it is.
The only thing that we're gonna see is CMP will have a credit on the bill. That's it. That's all we're gonna see. It's not, nothing we're gonna do. We're basically just renting a spot up in Sydney on five solar panels that are gonna save Acton.
They're gonna save money.
Yes.
More or less.
More or less.
And the ones you see down here, like on the H Road, that'll be a solar farm that somebody somewhere in Maine might tap into for their credit, but they don't have to be in Acton. They could be in Bangor. See, that's kind of how it works. You'd think the Acton would buy Acton, it doesn't.
That's cool.
The one on the H Road is already...
Somebody's already allocated.
It's already been allocated.
It's very hard to like wrap your head around what this whole thing really is. If you just look at it as simply, we are buying credits, pay our electricity.
Now, where does the power, does the power come off those panels? This is what bothers me. I mean, would you want to live next door to that plant over there?
Okay.
I mean, you got these poles there and all these panels and...
But just remember, we're buying credits.
We're buying credits.
I'm not, forget the credits. I'm not, I'm talking about living amongst those panels.
It doesn't, it doesn't, there is, you notice nothing.
So that's what you say now.
It's not like when you stand underneath the big high transmission power lines and you're going...
I don't know.
The radio doesn't work.
But there's money, there's money being made in that.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Why would you do it if there was?
The landowner, the landowner.
Oh, yeah.
My thing is, I wish it was 10 years. I feel like the solar panels can last 10 years. Do I know if solar panels in Maine will last 20?
That's what I wonder.
Whatever. Everybody says, listen, when LEDs came into the sign industry, we didn't touch them, because the LEDs, oh, they would last 25 years. Tell your client, they'll never change another fluorescent bulb or neon ever again.
Forget that.
Well, within five years, the newest ones dimmed, because they didn't make it for cold. Now, there were companies, this, I'm already talking 20 years ago. There were companies that, oh, no, we got it, and it's not gonna do anything with the cold. You don't have to worry. Because these were all down in the South, and they worked great in the South. And, you know, so the technology has become better, but, you know, even now, I don't trust some of the ones we put in 15 years ago. They're already dimming or not, you know, working. So it's that type of technology that I worry about. Yes, it seems great. I know solar panels have been around for a long time, so I'm hoping, you know, they're already got the kinks out and stuff, you know? There must be an...
But the other thing, too, is the landowner, okay? The flip side is, the landowner is required to provide power to us for the next 20 years. So if something happens to the panel, it's going to be up to the landowner to replace those panels, to make sure they're still generating power.
And we'll still get our electricity as that power panel up there goes and blows away, because we're drawing from, it's off the grid. We're just getting our credit from that solar panel. It's not the actual kilowatt from that panel might come here. It's more about where is your energy coming from, where are you getting the credits from?
I know. This panel, this ball is...
It is hard to understand.
I run by that place.
What we need, what we need to do now is to... Well, what we need, what we need to do now is to give John permission.
Yeah, go ahead.
Give him the authorization.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we give John Ross, our Superintendent Principal, the authority to sign on to this Revision Energy Contract.
I'll second.
Okay.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
I said my piece.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll need you to take us out of this session, break for a moment, and take us into executive session, please.
Okay, so I'll look for a motion to go into executive session.
Regarding personnel matters.
Yes.
To go into an executive session for personnel matters at 6:11.
Okay, I'll get the camera.
I'll second.
Thank you, everybody who came tonight, we appreciate you being here.
Who just seconded?
Mary.
Mary.
Oh, I know, I don't know what that.
She wasn't doing here.
I know, she talked to Jen, though.
She had, she said at the beginning, she had.